So I did adjoint the meeting, and I guess I just have to wait.
I would ask that you please mute yourself unless you are speaking. And at this time, Roxanne, would you please call the, uh, the call, read the call of the public hearing, please?
In accordance with Connecticut's general state statute seven dash one sixty-three, the Ledger Town Council will conduct a virtual public hearing video conference on Wednesday, October eighth, two thousand twenty, at six fifteen, to receive comments and recommendations regarding the following. Number one is to transfer town-owned property located at three B two Ledger Highway, Ledger, approximately ninety-six point five two plus or minus acres, known as the Founder's Preserve to Avalonia Land Conservancy, to remain open to public for passive recreation, and to be protected in perpetuity under the conservation's care with the following conditions. One, the existing eighteen hundred square foot house and associated land would be subdivided off the land at Avalonia Land Conservancy's expense. Two, Avalonia Land Conservancy would allow for the continuation of bow hunting on the Founder's Preserve property in accordance with ordinance one hundred dash zero one eight, an ordinance providing for archery hunting on certain town-owned lands. Number three, Avalonia Land Conservancy will pay for all conveyances and fees regarding the transfer of the property. And number four, in the event Avalonia Land Conservancy determines that they no longer wish to own or no longer can own the so-called Founder's Preserve property, Avalonia will first offer the property back to the town of Ledger as the last owner of record. Such conveyance will be at no cost to the town other than customary recording and legal fees. The town shall have one hundred and twenty days to accept or reject the re-acquisition. The town shall notify Avalonia in writing of its intent to accept or reject. Should the town choose not to accept the property back, Avalonia would then have the right to convey the parcel to a third party of their choice. And then the second item for public hearing tonight is proposed amendments to ordinance number three hundred dash zero one one, an ordinance providing for the term of appointment and, uh, appointment of zoning board of appeals and establishing a fee schedule for the town of Ledger. Interested persons may submit written communications to town council@ledgerct.org. Please join the meeting from your computer, tablet, or smartphone. The remote meeting participation information for the video conference and draft ordinance will be provided on the town's website at www.ledgerct.org, located under the Agenda and Minutes tab. This was dated at Ledger, Connecticut, the fifteenth day of October, two thousand twenty, for the Ledger Town Council, Linda C. Davis, Chairman.
Thank you, Roxanne. I believe I have everybody muted, so we should not have any background noise. If you are planning to speak, please type your name and address into the chat box. And at this time, I will ask Counselor Dobrowski to do a brief presentation.
Hi, thank you, Chairman Davis. So this is a piece of property that the town acquired through a tax lien foreclosure. There was, the Founder's Preserve was a development, a planned development that happened, um, back in the late two thousand timeframe, uh, subsequent to the housing market crash in two thousand eight. The, the, the development failed, um, and then the town took the property based on, uh, foreclosed on the property based on, uh, tax, on a tax lien. Um, I will also state that the Founder's Preserve development, when that happened, the developer had written a letter of intent to the town to abandon the plans. Uh, so they are no longer valid as they stand right now. Um, but the idea was just to transfer the property to Avalonia, Avalonia being a good steward of properties that they've, we've transferred from the town's open space to Avalonia in the past. They've shown to be great stewards of property with open space, maintaining it for public access, uh, maintaining it as its natural condition and things like that. So the idea was just to transfer this property over to Avalonia for other conservancy to make, remain in trust, uh, to keep the land in open space. Really all I have. I don't know if anything, but Linda, if you have anything else you want to add?
Nothing to add. Thank you, Counselor Dobrowski. Um, Mr. Psoms, do you have anything to add? Were, were you speaking under public comment?
So I, I was planning to speak after Mr. Treister, who wrote a lengthy letter with reasons to vote no. So I, I would like to go after Mr. Treister. Thank you.
That's fine.
Yes, you're muted, Linda.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, at this time, I'm going to move to public comments on the Founder's Preserve item. And then we'll go to the public hearing presentation on the board, uh, zoning board of appeals fee schedule, and then public comments on that. So at this time, I will open it up to public comments on the Founder's Preserve issue, and I will call Mr. Dozier first.
Hi, this is Alex Dozier. I live at three forty Pumpkin Hill Road in Ledyard. I just wanted to, uh, vote my support for the transfer of this property to the Avalonia Land Conservancy.
Mr. Treister will be next. Thank you, Mr. Dozier.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening. Uh, for the record, my name is Eric Treister. Uh, even though I support open space and passive recreation, I am opposed to the town giving away a ninety-six acre property that could be worth about a million dollars to a tax-exempt entity without first evaluating all of the property's potential uses to see if some uses may better address the needs of our town. I also believe the proposed transfer will, in the long term, be too costly in terms of the loss of new housing, the loss of future jobs, and the loss of tax revenues. The town, if it sells the property on the open market together with its approved subdivision plan, would receive not only the proceeds from its sale, but would also receive forty-nine acres of deeded open space. The remainder of the property, about forty-seven acres, would be developed into thirty-five building lots. Ledger will eventually need new housing, and when the land is improved with roads and infrastructure and thirty-five new homes are constructed, the property would generate over two hundred thousand dollars in annual tax revenue. The town could require the development's roads to be privately owned and its housing to be age-restricted, which would substantially reduce the burden the development would place on town resources. There could be other uses of the property that should be considered. For example, the land could be developed as an RV campground, which is an allowed use in R sixty districts. Campgrounds, which are currently in high demand, would provide employment opportunities and bring customers into our town. It would also provide a continuing stream of tax revenue with almost no burden on town services. It may be possible, with the zoning regulation change, to develop the ninety-six acres into a golf course. The property has wetlands and a pond and well, and, and well-designed golf courses. Excuse me. And well-designed golf courses are compatible with challenging topography, ponds, and wetlands. A golf course could include age-restricted, high-end housing along its fairways. A well-designed and managed golf course would provide jobs and a continuous stream of revenue for the town with little or no burden on town resources. The property could be sold or leased for development and operation as a farm. The lease or sales agreement could include a provision that the farm is required to allow passive recreation as an accessory use of the property. If leased, its use as a farm would provide annual revenue for the town while at the same time banking the property for the town's future use, such as for a future new school or a future new park. It may also be possible that part of the property's ninety-six acres, perhaps about twenty acres, could be reserved for use for the Ledger fairgrounds. This would leave a significant amount of land, perhaps as much as seventy-six acres, that could be deeded to Avalonia for passive recreation. I believe that a new twenty-acre fairground, together with seventy-six acres of deeded open space, may be better for the town than a single new ninety-six-acre nature preserve. The property's ninety-six acres and its approved conservation subdivision plan, if properly advertised and marketed for one or two years with a well-known commercial real estate broker, would likely sell on the open market for about a million dollars. If sold, it would most likely be developed as a thirty-five lot conservation subdivision called Founder's Preserve. Fortunately, there is no emergency, and there is no reason to make such a big decision this evening. I urge residents to vote no on the proposed transfer of ownership to allow the, to allow time for the property to be marketed and to see what happens. If there is no interest after one or two years, the town can then make the decision to transfer the property to Avalonia. But if there is interest in the property, which I expect will be the case, the proposals can then be evaluated so we, the public, can make an informed decision if the property should or should not be developed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treister. Uh, Mr. Psoms at this time.
Sorry, trying not to. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I wanted to respond after Mr. Treister because he sent a, sent his letter to the town council in advance. So I wanted to share some, some facts about the property itself. I've had a long history with this property. I've done a lot of work to try and get it preserved. Um, so I want to answer some specific questions for Mr. Treister. Uh, first of all, I want to point out that the subdivision was abandoned by the developer. Um, it is questionable whether it's worth a million dollars. It's highly questionable. Um, after the subdivision was approved, the attorney for the developer commented that the cost to develop each lot would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, not including the cost of houses. And this is presumably the reason the developer never chose to move forward with the project. Um, regarding the tax revenue from new homes, article after article after article show that the cost to towns all over the country are providing services for residential housing, including education, in the past twenty years, have been substantially higher than the tax revenue collected. In particular, Ledyard has a very high tax, uh, high percentage of residential housing. Therefore, our costs are even higher. The developer cho, uh, received approval for the development, excuse me, in two thousand and seven, and yet chose not to develop it. There has to be a reason. Um, the developer also originally proposed affordable housing and withdrew that proposal before they proposed, uh, the thirty-four houses. The property includes rocky terrain, boulder trains, steep slopes, wetlands, marshes, ponds, historic stone structures, and streams. The approved development plan included a road with a private shale driveway over eighteen hundred feet long, plus other roadways, that if the development were to be approved or had been approved and then developed, the town would have had to maintain it. So I question how leasing the property to another developer would be any different in the high cost of the original development. Since it was approved, um, and long after the development was approved, um, the property became a great blue heron nesting site with a rookery consisting of fifteen to nineteen blue heron nests on the upper pond. It is highly likely, unlikely a development would receive approval today because although the blue heron itself is no longer protected, its nesting sites are. In response to camp, uh, campgrounds is proposed, private campgrounds in the area have been closing for years. Uh, the land is also not suitable for farming, given the terrain, the boulders, the wetlands, et cetera. Um, the only access to the property is through the house at three thirty-two Colonel Ledger Highway, which would have to be torn down. Therefore, the town could not recoup the value to the home by selling it if this were to happen. The land is not suitable for affaire due to the same access issues, scope, and, uh, I'm sorry, slope, and the existence of wetlands, uh, as already mentioned. The town has already set aside land for potential school development with better access in grades, which is also, has been considered or could be considered for proposals for campgrounds, fairgrounds, uh, and all of the other suggestions made. And I'm speaking specifically of the Clark Farm. Um, another idea of developing the property is a golf course. Again, the slopes, the, the terrain, everything else makes that unsuitable, and golf courses are failing and being converted to residential housing all over the country. Um, there were some other ideas. I won't take everybody's time with those. Um, but, uh, I want to say also that the Groton reservoir system is located on property with a long-term lease and has not been proven to have been mistaken, as was suggested in the original letter. Um, I, I'm speaking, obviously, in, in favor of transferring this land to Avalonia. Um, we worked very, I worked very hard to transfer it to U.S. Fish and Wildlife for rabbit habitat, and I worked with the property owners who would have to give permission for heavy equipment to carry out Fish and Wildlife's plan. Um, none of the abutting landowners were in, in favor of that proposal. And in addition, they would have had to give permission, and they were not willing to do that. And that's the reason we went from transferring this to Fish and Wildlife to Avalonia. I personally believe, uh, actually, I know that Avalonia will be a great steward for the land. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Psoms. Uh, next I have Mr. Holyfield.
Hello, thank you. Hopefully you guys can all hear me.
We can, thank you.
Mr. Psoms echoed a lot of my sentiments and hit a lot of my key points. Uh, I'm obviously in favor of this as well. Um, I did see some exchange this morning on the internet, and I added to the discussion as well. I'm not in favor of any sort of, uh, development on this, given the sensitive nature of these ecosystems that we're trying to protect. And while I appreciate being mindful of, uh, sort of development opportunities, I also fear that creating things like golf courses and campgrounds create a lot of edge, and it's not really doing anything positive for the ecosystem that's there, which, uh, having hiked the property, I agree, the terrain is rough and rugged and would likely not be appealed, uh, appealing to a developer. And, um, I think Avalonia is going to be a great steward in order to have this available for ultimately our kids and our grandkids down the road. It's preserved open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holyfield. Uh, next up, um, Ms. Waldrey.
Thanks. Uh, so I am speaking also in favor of transferring the land to Avalonia Land Conservancy, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a professor at the University of Connecticut. My research focuses on looking at land use practices and how they impact water quality um, in our, in our local environment. And I'm also a member of the Governor's Council on Climate Change, uh, working on the sub-working group on natural and working lands, which definitely applies here. Um, so I could go on forever on this topic. I, I feel very passionately about it. It is definitely my life's work. Um, but I will, I will not do that. Instead, I'll just say shortly that maintaining large blocks of undeveloped land is critical to us. That, that land provides ecosystem services. It keeps the level of water in our wells high enough. It keeps our water clean, both our drinking water and our coastal water. And it provides services that we don't even recognize. Things like taking carbon out of the atmosphere, storing it in the ground. You get that from forests and natural lands. You don't get that from our turf on our lawns and from the roofs and driveways of our homes. So if we convert even small portions of our land to this developed land, we're losing a lot of services. Connecticut is on a trajectory, as a state, looking to reduce our carbon footprint. We're going to be reducing greenhouse gases by eighty percent by two thousand fifty. The, the governor is already looking at, um, giving us credit for preserving natural lands uh, and taking credit away from us for transferring those lands into developed lands. So all around, this makes a lot of sense. Avalonia, as has been mentioned, is a great steward of the land, and preserving this land provides a lot of benefits to us as residents of Ledger. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Woody.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I speak in support tonight of the transfer of the property, which is Founder's Preserve to Avalonia Land Conservancy. Uh, I wanted to mention briefly, uh, that the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, did perform a twenty-four review on this transfer. Uh, did vote unanimously, uh, in favor of this transfer. Um, the conditions of the approval added by the council are well-conceived and serve to protect the town's ongoing interest in the parcel. I would like to see the town continue to administer the bow hunting lottery and permissions on the property. It's a good and proven system to ensure fair and safe bow hunting on the property, and the town must continue the program anyways because of other properties under the ordinance. A minor change to the ordinance should allow the town to administer the lottery for non-town-owned property. Preserving this land in perpetuity as open space serves the goal of Ledger to retain as much of its rural character as possible. The town has neither the will nor the funds to develop, protect, or manage the hundred acres of Founder's Preserve as a public park, and Avalonia has served as a good steward of other pieces of land, both in the town and the surrounding area. Nothing in this transfer of property prevents the town from being involved in preservation of features on the property, but importantly, it does not obligate the town to be involved. Instead, the town is able to remain at arm's length for any obligations while encouraging the work of land trusts to best steward the open space. It's also worth noting that nothing in this transfer prevents the involvement of other organizations to work with Avalonia to preserve important features on the property. In fact, it's likely that Avalonia is the best partner to work with any external partners to make sure the preserve is best managed for both recreation and conservation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Uh, Ms. Pearson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, I submitted my, uh, Anne Roberts Pearson for Anderson Drive, Gales Ferry. I submitted my, um, comments, which I think I will read, uh, for brevity, um, here. I have a question, Madam Chairman. Um, will any of the submissions for people who are not with us this evening be read out loud?
Um, I, I generally don't read the entire letters. We would be here quite a while. I have many. Um, I generally just say, um, Jane Smith submitted a letter of support. Um, so if you have something in your letter you would like to share, you should probably do that. They are all up on the, um, on the portal, on our, on the agenda. If you look, Roxanne, frantically all day, kept updating the, so they are all there. However, if you have something you want to say, I, I would suggest you do it.
All right, I will, I will say it, and then I, I will share, um, that a letter came in late this afternoon that will, um, uh, help to support, um, my comments.
Okay, I, I did see that letter. Um, Roxanne, did that one make it?
Yes, it did.
So the council all saw it, um, and anybody in the public that looked at the portal would have seen it as well.
All right, and I'll, I will just reference that, Madam Chairman, is-
That would be perfect. That would be perfect.
I will just reference that Madam Chairman is referring to a letter from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, um, from Mark McGee, Chief Division of, of Realty, uh, of whom I am going to, um, mention in my letter. Um, on balance and in full disclosure, I will just state that, um, I was president of Avalonia Land Conservancy from two thousand and eight to two thousand and eleven, and I'm still a lifetime member. And in addition, I was on the Ledger Historic District Commission and the Ledger Conservation Commission for many years while this property that we're talking about was, was trying to obtain subdivision approval by the town, starting way back in two thousand and four, believe it or not, and ultimately, it, it received approval in May of two thousand and seven. That said, this evening, I would ask that this vote be delayed for the following reasons. Uh, the first reason is that, um, it is my understanding that Avalonia Land Conservancy has not yet even voted to accept this property with the conditions, uh, the four conditions mentioned, uh, in transfer. So, um, I am told by, by another ex-president that the board meeting, uh, will take place only this very evening where they will take up this issue. And the second, uh, reason is that I believe the voter, voters of the town of Ledger are most likely unaware, uh, that there is an alternative way to divest itself of this property, um, make, make a proper packet of money, and conserve it in perpetuity at the same time. At stake here monetarily is the fair market value, purchase price of this acreage, along with an annual refuge revenue sharing payment to the municipality in lieu of taxes. And one would ask, how is this possible? And I would say via the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, who is very interested in ninety-six point five acres due to the Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge System, which was just signed into being by Congress in October, two thousand and sixteen. This parcel is within the official mapping boundaries of the newly established Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge. U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service visited the property along with many other conservation organizations, including the Nature Conservancy and Connecticut Audubon in two thousand and eighteen. Since that time, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has been trying to have discussions with the mayor, starting off with an official letter to the mayor on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, and receiving a letter back from the mayor on April ninth, two thousand and eighteen, asking them to accept his letter as his intent to open discussions with them. Unfortunately, the mayor has ignored their outreach since that time. I myself made the mayor aware that the very first parcel of Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge was purchased by the Fish and Wildlife Service here locally in southeastern Connecticut in North Stonington in June of two thousand and twenty, thus launching Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge in the state of Connecticut. And in August, two thousand and twenty, the Land and Water Conservation Fund, created by Congress in nineteen sixty-five, was permanently funded by a landmark bill signed into law by Congress, permanently funded. This is, uh, very important, um, because the Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge is funded through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. And I also made the mayor aware of this, uh, important news. So I would also say that this property has significant cultural, archaeological, historic, and ecological, environmental value, not only for Ledger, but for our nation. It, it has significant historic value because of its origins as possibly sacred grounds of Native Americans and as colonial sites of the Roger and Quakers. Certain landscapes are essential to our understanding of history and culture. This is one of those landscapes, a heritage landscape. It will take us substantial resources to properly protect this land if and when it becomes more known to the public. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service now has the federal resources to protect all the values of this property that will interpret this American story for generations to come. Knowing that this opportunity exists, why would we want to consider giving this land to a nonprofit, however responsible and well-regarded it may be in the community? I again ask that this vote- I again ask that this vote be delayed, and that the mayor and the town council please engage with Mark McGinnity, Chief Division of Realty, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, 300 Westgate Center Drive, Hadley, Mass., and I have provided phone numbers, and Andrew C. French, Project Leader, Sylvia Conti, National Wildlife Refuge, Stuart B. McKinney, National Wildlife Refuge, John Hay, National Wildlife Refuge, 103 Plumtree Road, Sunderland, Mass., and I have also given you his contact information. I want to say thank you for listening, and let's be as mindful and as financially savvy about the future of this property as we can be. And shortly after I submitted my written comments this afternoon, Mr. Mark McGinnity himself, Chief Division of Realty, put forth a letter to the town council, which seems to have removed the idea of a purchase of the property, and I assume that that is because the town is offering to give the land away to Avalonia. So when the United States Fish and Wildlife sees that the town is willing to give it away, they are reluctant to come forth with funding to purchase because it looks like the town is willing to give it away. So they are talking about conservation easements and engagement with the town, or whatever the potential owner of this property is. But I would stress that I do think that it is inappropriate at this time with this information from Fish and Wildlife to take a vote of any kind at this time. I really think that it would be smart for the town council, I'm sure there's still a land use committee, to work with Fish and Wildlife and even Avalonia, and have all three groups work together to figure out what is best for this property. But there's a lot at stake with this property, and I hope that we can delay the vote until such time as discussions have been had. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just clarify that the town council has already voted, and it would be up to the town meeting to determine that. Next up is Mr. Cherry.
Good evening, Chairman Davis. Mike Cherry, 5 Whipper Will Drive in Gales Ferry, currently a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and served as chair of the previous Planning Commission during the time this subdivision was being considered and approved. I want to echo what Costler Psalms has said and echo part of what Ms. Pearson has said. I agree with her. I remember her comments during the public hearings, and at that time, we were all looking at how to preserve the significant cultural, archaeological, and historic regions of this property. There is an archaeological management plan. The mayor has a copy. It's on file with the town. It falls into what I consider a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to preserve a segment of land in Ledgerd that not only talks to the Rogeran Quakers and their history, but as Ms. Pearson pointed out, there are significant findings that predate written history from indigenous people that lived here at the time, all verified through the State Archaeological and Cultural Preservation Office. And then when you throw in the environmental and wildlife parts and preserving it forever, I can't think of another piece of property in Ledgerd that has all those plus marks for preservation. So I strongly support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Linda Shaw, please, is next.
Hi, good evening. My name is Linda Shaw, and I live at 330 Colonel Ledgerd Highway. I unfortunately happen to be the person who lives next door to this property, and I've lived through the horrors of living next door to this property. And while I'm in favor of it being preserved for all the important reasons, I wish that someone would speak to what's going to happen to this property if it is transferred to Avalonia? Where's the public access is going to be? Who's responsible for maintaining them? And what's the story with the property after the 332 house?
Mr. Psalms, could you address that, please? Are you able to address that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So there are two ways to access this property in addition to the house at 332 Colonel Ledgerd Highway. The developer's plan in purchasing that house was to demolish it. That's where the road was originally going to go. That's where you entered the development. The house, as mentioned in the proposal, would be split off from the property so that the town can sell the house and presumably recoup some of the tax losses that it took to property for non-payment. That leaves two other ways to access the property. One is a private pentway, known as Paint Mill Pentway. And the definition of a pentway is, it's a dirt road, first of all. The definition of a pentway is that it's a private road owned by the people who live on the road. The other way to access the property is through the Cranwood Homeowners Association parcel of approximately 20 acres behind the Cranwood subdivision on Pumpkin Hill Road. So as I mentioned briefly, I have met with the people who live on the pentway and also members, actually, the officials of the Homeowners Association at Cranwood, and neither were comfortable with the idea of Fish and Wildlife's proposal to remove significant parts of the forest on this property using heavy equipment. And they were asking, Fish and Wildlife was asking if either the owners of the pentway would permit them to use the pentway to run heavy equipment in to remove trees, or if the owners of Cranwood Homeowners Association would allow them to cross the open space that Cranwood owns. As mentioned, none of the homeowner groups were interested in that proposal and were actually against it. That leaves no way to access the property without tearing down the house that we hope to sell. If it's transferred, so that's the reason that we shifted our attention from Fish and Wildlife and the rabbit habitat to Avalonia. The, as a property owner on the pentway, right now, that's the town, and Avalonia would presumably become the property owner, and therefore, as a property owner abutting the pentway, Avalonia could give permission for people to access the property over the pentway. Access to that property has been available to the town residents for the past, I think it's three years now since we acquired the property. There is very little traffic. The discussions I've had with Avalonia is that they would create a small parking area at the end of the pentway where people could park and then get out of their vehicles and walk the property. That is really the only legal access to the property as it stands today, unless the house is torn down. I hope I answered all the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Psalms. I am going to move on to Maria Engel.
Hi, Linda. This is Maria Engel. I live at 331 Pumpkin Hill Road, and my property is adjacent to the parcel in question. Although I do support business development in Ledgerd, in this case, I want to state my support to transfer this piece of land for conservation. Bill Psalms referenced to a developer that had owned the property many years ago, and at the time, there were some reasons I didn't support the development of that subdivision.
Not if they ran to the town of Ledgerd.
Which included historical structures, nature, and wildlife habitat. So I just wanted to reiterate that I support the transfer of this land to conservation. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Pam Ball.
Hi, Pam Ball. I live at 674 Shoeville, so I'm not adjacent to the property. I'm simply a town resident. I only learned about this this afternoon. I found Ms. Pearson's comments very interesting. My preference is that this land remain in its native state. I don't know enough information to say whether it's better to go through Avalonia or through Parks and Wildlife, if I have that right, but I definitely would not want to see this piece of land developed. I think there's probably a lot of other land that's in worship that could be developed, and I think we need to leave this as a treasure in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Mary Graham.
Hi, thank you, Mary Graham, 72A Long Pond Road over the east side of Ledgerd, and I've been a resident for a long time. I'm very much in support of keeping this as native land, as one of the other speakers mentioned. I think it would be wonderful if there's some way to incorporate it into the Great Thicket Refuge, because that would be part of a national program, and I think we all benefit from being part of the national refugee programs. Avalonia is a wonderful steward, and I fully support any projects that they take on. So either way, I think that I would love to see the town go in that direction and not put it up for development. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Engel.
This is Scott Engel. I am at 331 Pumpkin Hill Road. My property abuts the parcel that we are discussing tonight. I'd like to state that my educational background is in wildlife science and natural resource management, and this parcel is a true treasure. As Mr. Psalms and some other folks had stated, there is a very large blue heron rookery back there on the Upper Pond, as well as beavers that have occasionally inhabited the area. There's kingfishers, there's quite a large waterfall population that migrates through the area. I would certainly question the value or the logistical aspects of developing the property based on the access to it, the slope of the property, the amount of wetlands on the property. I support the property to be protected in perpetuity. Ms. Pearson raised some good points. I do know that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service walked the property to look at it in terms of habitat for the New England cotton tail. I think the Avalonia group are great stewards as well. So I want to support or extend that I support protecting the property in perpetuity and not to development. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen.
Hi, I'm Karen. I live in Gales Ferry, and I found about this meeting the other day in the day newspaper, and I just wanted to voice my support of the transfer of the land in light of what was said to whoever can conserve it in the best way possible. I think it's important to conserve land right now with what's going on in the world, where all the trees are being cut down and, you know, fish are dying. So this is going to be a treasure for our future, for wildlife, for children, for clean air and water, so I'm hoping it will be conserved. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Woody.
Hi, thank you. I'm Julie DuPont-Woody. I currently serve as Avalonia's vice president. And I just, first of all, want to clear up some confusion. Avalonia's board has not voted on this property. However, we cannot vote on this transaction until we have a positive referendum from the town to vote on, a positive offer from the town, something that we can vote on. Our Ledgerd Town Committee and the Acquisitions Committee of Avalonia did fully support the transfer of this property. And we are aware of the extraordinary ecological value of this property for habitat, for clean water, and also for passive recreation. We are open to working with other outside organizations if the opportunity exists to do so. Avalonia has done this in the past. We have experience with this. And so I think that obviously Avalonia is a great partner to the town with transactions such as this to preserve valuable open space. We've worked with the town over the years, many occasions, and we're looking forward to the opportunity to work with the town on this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak at this time? Deborah Vessels. Could you state your address, please?
Yes, Deborah Vessels, 1055 Colonel Ledgerd Highway. I would like to go on record supporting the transfer of this property, of the said property, to Avalonia Land Conservancy for preservation, for perpetuity, for all citizens in our area to enjoy. It's real important that we just don't develop everything along the way, and this is something that I think the town should look at and highly consider doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Mr. Mogul. Your address, please. Mr. Mogul, you're on mute?
Thank you for that. My name is Paul Mogul. I'm 827 Colonel Ledgerd Highway in Ledgerd, Connecticut, the other side of Colonel Ledgerd Highway. I do not oppose this transfer of property. I prefer, as pointed out by Ms. Pearson, to use the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Association as the receiver because of the long-term beneficial impact on the city of Ledgerd. It will have an income. It'll have the best of the best in terms of development, development, development is the wrong word, but of conserving the resources that are present in that piece of land. Ledgerd has 40 square miles of property. Of the 40 square miles, about two are in water, two square miles in water. In September 2019, I was working on the PCOD of agriculture and found out through our own county office there that we have, Avalonia has about 433 acres in Ledgerd at this present time. If you add another 100 to it, it's almost a square mile that Avalonia will have of the 38 square miles we have. We need to ask ourselves, how much of our land do we want to put into a nonprofit organization? Whereas the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will have a long-term income. Now, I understand we need, Ledgerd has a lot of land to sell or to donate. However, I think it would behoove us to look at maybe limiting nonprofits to maybe two square miles of our 38 square miles. Just a thought. I do support the transfer, whether it's Avalonia or the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, but do prefer the Fish and Wildlife Service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mogul. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Hearing none, what will happen now is-
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Madam Chair, Bill Psalms, one more thing. I just wanted to add a little more fact for the record. Thank you. I also met with Mr. McGinnity from Fish and Wildlife, and with regard to historic stone structures on the property, when I mentioned preserving those to Mr. McGinnity, he said, "Don't use that word with the federal government." He said, "We are required to remove all structures, so don't call them structures." And we haven't since, but that concerned me greatly, as did the plan to remove large parts of the forest for the habitat with the heavy equipment. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Psalms.
Can I rebut? This is Anne Roberts Pearson. Can I rebut?
Well, it wouldn't be a rebuttal, but you could make a comment.
I just think that the Fish and Wildlife Service has not had substantive discussions on exactly- on exactly what they would do or wouldn't do, or share the limit of their, of what they could do. And I think if you could hear the types of things that they can do, you would be very surprised in their purchasing power and then the things that they can accomplish. So when I hear these comments that the only two places that there could be an access to this property would be the paint mill or through the Cranwood, that's just not, that's just not correct. There could certainly be an access through Colonel Ledger Highway without destroying the house that you're talking about. They have legal and financial resources that the town will never have, that Avalonia will never have. And so it is, I would say incorrect to state that there are only two possible accesses to the property. And I also would like to hear from U.S. Fish and Wildlife directly about any structural deterioration. I don't think that there were any substantive meetings. It is my understanding that when the mayor went and talked to the citizens of the Cranwood subdivision, he did not take the Fish and Wildlife Service with him so that they could speak for themselves. He spoke to that subdivision, and Lord knows what happened. No, Lord knows what he told them. So I'm very familiar with the Cranwood entry up to their 22 or 25 acre open space, which could possibly lead to access to this property. Because many years ago, they offered their open space to Avalonia. And we walked that property, and then they decided not to donate it to Avalonia. So there are, there needs to be discussion with a federal, with a federal agency to know exactly what they can and cannot do. But a national, having a national wildlife refuge in your town is no small thing. It is, it's a marvelous thing, and that will open up all kinds of other federal opportunities, the likes of which we don't even know. But I would say that if you had a piece of property like this in a town such as Ledger that could stand the revenue and could stand the attention of a federal U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, that we should at least spend some time addressing that, and with Avalonia as well. But I think, I think we are very premature this evening to take, to take, to take a vote one way or the other. I think we need to step back, be more mindful, get more information, and then bring more information to the citizens of the town of Ledger. And I'm a little surprised to hear that the town council has already taken a vote.
We voted to send it to a town meeting. It's the town people that get to vote on this. We're, we, our votes tonight will be just as every one of the people that are here's votes.
Oh, I see. I see. Okay. Well, good. And I don't think there's any rush on this, but I think that the fact that the Fish and Wildlife is there, that the mayor has ignored their outreach, is cutting, is shortchanging the citizens of the town of Ledger. That's what I think. I don't think it should be-
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that likes to speak at this time? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, yes.
Yes. Anything new to add, Mr. Treister?
Is the-
Anything new to add?
Is the, is there a way to delay this vote, to continue the, to continue the public hearing until an opportunity has been reached to communicate with Fish, with the federal people? Perhaps the mayor could proactively make contact. We could learn some more and then continue the public hearing, say, a week from now?
You could, you could defeat the motion.
If, if, if the intent is to approve the transfer to somebody, if, if, which, which I understand, even though I disagree with him, but I fully understand it. But I think we need more information in order to make an intelligent decision. And if we could, if we could delay the, the, the vote until more information is obtained, it seems like, it seems like as taxpayers and residents, we would be able to make a better decision. I, it's just, it's just my feeling that, that it's, there's no, there's no emergency. There's no hurry. We don't have to do this tonight. And if we're going to do it, maybe there's an opportunity, we can get some money from the federal government for this. And maybe we'll, maybe, maybe it does have the resources and the talent to, 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 to serve the town well. But, but we, but we don't know, and it takes time to figure that out. So if there's any way to do it, I would urge that the vote, the, the only thing, the only motion is to, is to give it to Avalonia.
That's correct.
And I think that's, I think it's premature to make that decision with the knowledge that we have with, with a federal Fish and Wildlife entity that, that might, might be better for our town.
I would suggest that if you feel that you want this delayed, then you should, then you should defeat the motion. Unless anybody else has a, another, Roxanne, do you have any suggestions if somebody would want to continue the, the public hearing? Mr., Mr. Cherry?
I just have a point of correction. Everybody's talked about access to the property. We were fairly concerned about that when we approved the subdivision. If you look at the southeast corner of the property, it abuts open space from Groton that I think is managed by GOSA, Groton Open Space Association. But there is an open space pathway at the southeast corner. Used to go around that lot. That's no longer a lot. And there's Heather Glenn Lane and Ledger and Groton dead ends against this property. So there is opportunity for whoever controls the property to provide access to the property.
Roxanne, do you have any other suggestions in terms of, I mean, my recommendation is that it be defeated if you want an opportunity to vote on something else. But I have to say, since I've been attending town meetings in, since 1984, probably, I've never seen one delayed. It's not like a zoning matter or where you can continue. I've never seen that happen at a town meeting. And that's a lot, long, a lot of years of town meetings and a lot of years of being the moderator at a town meeting. So I defer to you, Roxanne, if you have any, if I'm wrong on that.
Right, yes. That would probably be the course of action. So if folks wanted to have another opportunity to consider something else, then, you know, if they voted down, you know, you got, you could come back with something else.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see-
Before you close the public hearing, we still have to talk about the ordinance.
That's correct. Let's see. I have a few other people that would, which to speak. And Roxanne, just so you know, there's a whole lot of people trying to get into the town council meeting, and I'm trying to, they're texting me, and I'm letting them know we're still in the public hearing. So if you get any texts or calls, that's what it's about. Let's see, Miss, Mr. Mardick.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Address is 59R-2 Long Pond Road South. I am certainly in favor of not developing this property, but I would have to agree with Mr. Treister with what he just said. It seems to me that this whole thing is just Avalonia or bust. And with a lot of the comments made tonight, it seems like there are possibly some other options on the table that may or should be further explored before a decision is made tonight. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Pam, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to revisit the comment about the pentway and the parking at the end of the pentway. I live on a pentway, and I would be terribly unhappy if all of a sudden I had a lot of traffic on my pentway that I have to maintain and people were parking. You know, the reason why people live on pentways is because they like their privacy. So I just think that we have to consider that, too, when we consider what to do with this land.
Thank you for comment. At this time, I am going to move on to the second subject of our public hearing, which is the issue of, right, I just have to find my cheat sheet. Mr. Psoms, you are presenting this. I know this is the, the fees.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Davis. So periodically, the town of Ledger updates its land use fees. These include fees for permits for various, with various departments within the town, commissions, inspectors, et cetera. Things like permits for building, a building, permits for applying for development. And so we recently undertook that exercise again to make sure that the town is competitive with other towns in the area. We don't want to be the lowest. We don't want to be the highest. And all of the land use commissions and boards have reviewed the land use fees. The town council has also restructured their ordinances so that they're easier to maintain, read, and research. And what we are doing with this, these land use fees is attaching them to a, an ordinance as an appendix, so that it's easier to maintain our ordinances going forward. The planning director has provided professional staff comments, as have, as have the other land use professionals. So this is, at this point, an opportunity for people to comment whether they think any of the fees are too high, too low, should be changed, et cetera. And then, then the town council can vote on that. So this is different from the public, or I'm sorry, the town meeting that we're having about the Founder's Preserve property. This is a public hearing that we're moving into to review and hear comments about land use fees, and then the town council will vote on those.
Thank you, Mr. Psoms. Does anybody have any comments on that, on that? Mr. Mogul?
Paul Mogul, 827 Colonel Ledger Highway, Ledger, Connecticut. I'm also a member of the Inland Wetman's Commission, and we voted on our fees and presented them to the EDC, the Economic Development Council, and Land Use Councils. I read this evening very curiously, though, that the fees for zoning board of appeals are quite exorbitant, $500 for someone trying to appeal an ord, a violation. It doesn't cost nearly that much to post in the, in the, in the New York, in the New York Times. No, in the, the day, yes, the registered newspaper. It might be more like 100 and a quarter, 150 would be more reasonable fee. It seems that $500 to publish and then adjudicate or whatever, it seems a bit excessive, since we are all volunteers in these commissions we serve on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cherry?
I, I understand Mr. Mogul's comment, but you have two postings prior to the public hearing that's required, and a posting after you've made the decision. So you're talking about three different postings, and 500 barely covers that. And I think Mr. Treister also has good information on how much it actually costs the posts.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hey, Woody.
Oh, Mr. Woody, yes.
Thanks. I, I just want to follow up with Mr. Cherry's comments that, yeah, the confusion is there is there's three postings required, and the land use department has gone through to make sure that those fees are in line with what it actual, what it actually costs. Those costs are in line with what it costs for a zoning application that requires that same level of postings. So it's fairly consistent through the town. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Dombrowski.
Yeah, the other thing I want to add, too, is that the real reason for the public hearing is that we are modifying the ordinance for the, for ZBA, because there's, their fee structure existed nowhere except on their applications itself. So the change of the ordinance was to make the, the fees for ZBA to be an appendix into their ordinance, which is consistent with all of the other land use commissions.
Okay. Here are no other comments. I would like to adjourn this public hearing, and we are going to just take a little pause, just a minute. Everybody can freshen their drinks, and we will move right to the town meeting for just a, just only a minute.
Chairman Davis, to be clear, we're exiting this meeting and starting a new one, correct?
We are staying in the same, on the same platform.
Okay. Thank you.
We, well, we're closing the public hearing, and then we're going to open the special town meeting, but we're staying in the same webex.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call this special town meeting to order. At this time, I'll call for nominations for moderator.
I make a motion, Linda Davis be moderator?
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Counselor Psoms, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other nominations?
I move the nominations be closed.
Is there a second?
Counselor, Counselor Psoms, second.
Okay. I have a little bit of an issue I need to deal with. As we vote on a number of things here, I want to make sure that whoever call in user number two is, number seven, and number nine, do you know who you are? Because I have no, no knowledge if you live in Ledger. Everybody else on this that I can see or see a name, I recognize as a Ledger residence. But we have a number of people that I do not know who they are. So if you would like to state who you are, otherwise, we're not going to be, we're going to have to do a vote by hand or, or specific names.
Chairman Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Psoms with a suggestion. I think if Roxanne unmutes those call-in users and they speak their name and their address, we'll see their microphone blinking, and then we'll at least know which person is calling user two, calling user nine, et cetera. And we would have to take their word for the fact that their name and address is what they say it is.
Okay. If you would like to unmute number, user two, user nine?
Uh, I, user nine, I think is unmuted, is unmuted number two. I can't seem to unmute them.
Okay, let me try. I cannot either. The other thing is, it could be somebody that's calling in as well as being on their, like iPad.
Right, yeah. That's true. Yes. That is true. Okay, I just unmuted number two.
Okay. Well, let's move forward, and we'll see what happens as we get there. At this time, I would ask, let's see, for a vote on nominations being closed, all in favor. How about if you raise your hand? We can actually see most of you. If you are not on the screen, you may be able to just unmute yourself and say yes.
Yes.
Okay, I think that, that passes, and then the next, the next vote would be Linda Davis as moderator. Please signify by raising your hand or speaking. Thank you. Okay, Roxanne, would you please call the meeting? Read the call of the meeting.
Yes. A virtual town meeting, video conference of the electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of Ledger, Connecticut. to vote in town meetings of the town of Ledger, Connecticut, will be held on the twenty-eighth day of October twenty twenty at six thirty PM for the following purpose. To consider, discuss and vote upon the following, shall the town of Ledger, Ledger transfer town owned property located at three three two Colonel Ledger Highway, Ledger, Connecticut, approximately ninety-six point five two plus or minus acres known as the Founder's Preserve to Avalonia Land Conservancy to remain open to the public for passive recreation and to be protected in perpetuity under the conservation commis- uh conserv- conservancy's care with the following conditions. One, the existing eighteen hundred square foot house and associated land would be subdivided uh off the property at Avalonia Land Conservancy's expense. Two, Avalonia Land Conservancy would allow for the continuation of bow hunting on the Founder's Preserve property in accordance with ordinance one hundred dash zero one eight and ordinance providing for archery hunting on certain town owned lands. Number three, Avalonia Land Conservancy will pay for all conveyances and fees regarding the transfer of the property. In the event Avalonia Land Conservancy determines they no longer wish to own or no longer can own the so-called Founder's Preserve property, Avalonia will first offer the property back to the town of Ledger as the last owner of record. Such conveyance will be at no cost to the town, other than customary recording and legal fees. The town shall have one hundred and twenty days to accept or reject the re-acquisition. The town shall notify Avalonia in writing of its intent to accept or reject. Should the town choose not to accept the property back, Avalonia would then have the right to convey the parcel to a third party of their choice. Days of that Ledger, Connecticut, this fifteenth day of October twenty twenty for the Ledger Town Council, Linda C. Davis, uh.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, I forgot to read the next. The meeting participants' information for the video conference and draft will be available on the town's website at www.ledgerct.org, located under the Agenda and Minutes tab. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, I will call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve for the town alleged to transfer town owned property located at three thirty-two Colonel Ledger Highway, Ledger, approximately ninety-six point five two acres plus or minus. Founder's Preserve to the Avalonia Land Conservancy to remain open to the public for passive recreation and to be protected in perpetuity under the Conservancy's care with the following condition. The existing eighteen hundred square foot house and associated land would be subdivided off the land at Avalonia Land Conservancy's expense. Avalonia Land Conservancy would allow for the continuation of bow hunting on the Founder's Preserve property in accordance with ordinance one hundred tax zero one eight and ordinance providing for archery hunting on certain town owned lands. Avalonia Learn Land Conservancy will pay for all conveyances and fees regarding the transfer of the property. In the event Avalonia Land Conservancy determines that they no longer wish to own or no longer can own the so-called Founder's Preserve property, Avalonia will first offer the property back to the town of Ledger as the last owner of record. Such conveyance will be at no cost to the town, other than customary recording and legal fees. The town shall have one hundred and twenty days to accept or reject re-acquisition. The town he'll notify Avalonia in writing of its intent to accept or reject. Should the town choose not to accept the property back, Avalonia will then have the right to convey the parcel to a third party of their choice.
Is there a second, please?
Counselor Song, second.
Thank you. Um, at this time, we would um, we normally have a presentation. Um, since we did the public hearing and the uh town meeting on the same evening, um, we generally just ask for a brief um presentation, since I believe everybody here, um, we're all the same. So um, Mr. Dombrowski, would you like to um just say a few more words, anything to add?
I have really to add, other than this is, as we stated earlier, um, this is a active property that was acquired by the town through a tax foreclosure on a former development property of ninety-eight acres. Um, the town has um, just have requested the residents um to vote on um transferring this property and conveying it to Avalonia Land Conservancy, um, as they have shown to be uh very good stewards of maintaining open space in the town on other parcels and in surrounding areas, communities as well. Um, and I think that they would be a very good stewardship uh, to maintain. As was stated in the public uh hearing, um, there were several issues with the property that make the topography very difficult to develop. And uh, and with other, the wild habitats and the water and the forestry, every, we maintain this open space and that is the town's desire from the council standpoint to maintain this as open space. And we think that Avalonia would be a prudent uh choice for this uh, to have this property.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. Um, at this time, are there any other final public comments or anyone new here that did not comment prior? See a couple of new faces or maybe one. Any other comments? Mr. Treister?
Uh, I just want to confirm that if we vote no on this, that the subject will be, will be brought back. The, 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 a no vote really means that we'll get more information from the federal fish and wildlife people to see what the, what, what is options and what is offering. Is, is that a, is that a, I just want to confirm that on the record.
That's a fair, that's a fair assessment. Are there any other comments?
I have one.
Yes.
Bruce, Bruce Gartske, ten Pleasant View, Ledger. Uh, I, I, I agree. I think this, there's no rush in this decision. I, I suggest that the town get a little bit more information before we make something finer. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Pearson, are you trying to talk? You need to unmute yourself.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to say, yes, if, if we vote this down tonight, um, I have been following this property all this time and working with Fish and Wildlife to, to make this dialogue with Ledger happen. And so they, they are, they are willing to talk. It is our end that is shutting them down. So I, I, I don't feel that I am going to stop trying to promote Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge for Ledger. So if this gets voted down, I will stay on this like a hound dog. No, have no fear. I am not leaving the future of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. And um, Ms. Engels, um, Counselor Engels, Engels?
It was only today that I learned that there was another option. It sounds like the nearly unanimous um, desire of our town is that it be, that the property be conserved. Um, so that's not the question here. Um, I, it sounds like the question is, is Avalonia, and, and we all agree too, Avalonia has been an excellent steward, so also not the question. I am persuaded that we need to do our due diligence on another option, and perhaps we do come back full circle to Avalonia, but I am going to be voting no because I, because I want to do our due diligence in doing all of the homework with Fish and Wildlife Services. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Songs?
Yeah, I, I just want to state again that I, I think there is a misconception about the idea that the Fish and Wildlife idea has just come up. Um, there seems to be a disagreement or disbelief between uh Ms. Pearson and myself. I personally had many of those conversations with Fish and Wildlife. I think Mr. McGinnis is a wonderful person. They came to see us three times. We've met with them. It's my personal conviction that we have done our due diligence and that Avalonia had the better offer for all of the reasons I stated, primarily the concern that Avalonia, I'm sorry, Fish and Wildlife could not commit to how much of the forest they would remove. They made the statement, and I will stand by it, that they said, do not use the word structures, that structures have to be removed by the federal government. Um, they insisted that every ten years they would be coming back with heavy equipment to remove forests to uh maintain that rabbit habitat, which I'm all in favor of, but this is not the right place to remove an old growth forest to create rabbit habitat with heavy equipment that, that neighboring landowners object to. So the due diligence that was done by the mayor and myself took place over a period of eighteen months to two years, and when Avalonia came along, we felt this was a better recommendation and a better offer, and we took that to the town council, and the town council has chosen to bring that preferred offer to this vote. Thank you.
Muted.
Mr. Cherry?
I, I, I strongly favor Avalonia, and there's a couple of reasons. Uh, I'll go back to my comments on historical preservation, uh, interest from indigenous people, the Rogerine Quakers. Counselor Song's right, uh, is, is alluding to the caverns that exist there. Um, we heard a lot of testimony during our public hearings on this piece of property for the subdivision. And uh, with Avalonia willing to preserve these, maintain historical sites, follow the archaeological management plan, I, I think we'd be foolish to not proceed and to uh put all our, our thoughts in waiting to see whether the federal government will react and preserve those same sites. Thank you.
Mr. Treister? Anything new?
I was wondering if anyone has any idea how much money the, the federal government might pay for the property? Just, just curious.
Ms. Pearson?
I don't know if they're, if they're, how much they're willing to pay because the town just offered the land to Avalonia for zero dollars. So the Fish and Wildlife are not fools. They're not going to dole out millions of dollars when the town has just offered it to a nonprofit for nothing. So if you read the letter of Mr. McGinnis today, it sounds to me like they are talking, um, working with the town, because the town, by offering it to Avalonia, sounds like they want to preserve it. So they, it looks to me, if you read that letter carefully, that they are looking for perhaps a conservation easement um at no cost. And then putting their funding into managing the property, stewarding it, signage, all of, all of that, finding the, finding the proper access. Um, you never know what kind of fund, funding they are actually going to have. They've, but the Land and Water Conservation Fund is a million dollar, multimillion dollar fund that has now been um permanently uh funded through Congress. But they're not going to throw money away. They're not going to dump a lot of money towards Ledger in the purchase price, I don't think, because why should they? The, the town just offered it to Avalonia for free. So if we are willing to give it to them for free, why wouldn't we um expect to work with Fish and Wildlife on that same type of level? But the funding that they would have would be to manage the property. And Avalonia has an awful lot of property to manage these days in the entire region. A lot of property to manage.
Thank you. This, um, so the government is watching us and they know that we're offering, that's scary. That's the reason for me to vote no, to vote against, to vote against it. That's a scary thought. Mr. Cherry?
Just a quick answer to Mr. Treister. If you go to the, the town summary report for the property prior to subdivision, the property was assessed at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Post subdivision, while it had thirty-five lots on it, it was assessed at six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So my fair assumption is, after abandoning the subdivision and no longer having building lots on it, it's worth somewhere in the neighborhood of the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and four.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry. Anyone else at this time?
One last thing. I just want to say that I think further discussion needs to be had. I don't, not that I'm not trusting the mayor and I'm not trusting Mr. Song, but I think the voters and the residents of the town of Ledger are being shortchanged by lack of discussion, lack of discussion. There has not been discussion since twenty eighteen with the Fish and Wildlife, and things are changing rapidly. This funding has come in. Great Thicket now exists in North Stonington. Um, I think we need information. I think knowledge is power.
Ms. Pearson, I think you've made your point.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments? Mr. Sebelia? I mute yourself. There you go.
Thank you, Chairman Davis. Um, my comment is pretty simple and straightforward. Avalonia has obviously a history of managing the properties that are under their care exceptionally well. Um, myself having spent a lot of time in the woods on those properties, I really don't have anything negative to say about Avalonia. They obviously have their funding together. They obviously have the ability to do what they need to do to complete their mission. My other comment is, I would much rather deal with a local nonprofit than the federal government. I just don't, I, I personally don't have a great feeling with U.S. Fish and Wildlife for background. I have a degree in park management. I have a background in natural resource management. So I'm not just sitting here off the cuff making a comment. I think that it's important that it re, it remain under local control. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Um, Ms. Valtry?
Yeah, if you read the letter from the Fish and Wildlife Service, McGinnis, it says they will not pay anything for that land. They will maintain and protect it, but they will not pay Ledger anything for it. Um, in addition to that, uh, we're looking at Avalonia Land Conservancy leaving the land largely untouched, and that's very different than the Fish and Wildlife Service managing it for the benefit of one species, and that is rabbits. I'd also like to mention that just because a land trust owns land does not mean that it cannot become part of a wildlife refuge in the future. Um, I'm working with a land trust right now, looking at incorporating some of their lands into the upcoming National Estering Research Reserve, which is going to be located partly in Groton and partly uh on the Connecticut River. So none of our choices tonight impact what that land can become in the future in terms of becoming part of a federal system. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Dombrowski?
Yeah, and the other thing I'd like to mention, when I read uh Mr. McGinnis's letter as well, it was very unclear, so, and I would like to echo uh Jamie's comment, that number one, Fish and Wildlife, based on that letter, was not going to give the town any money. And in reality, they were not even going to take over the property. It was strictly a conservation easement that would be free, provided to Fish and Wildlife for them to do what they would, and that they would maintain the property, but it would still retain ownership of the town. That's what I got from the letter.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I apologize for muting a few people. We have um some background noise. Uh, Mr. Engel? If you could unmute yourself.
Thank you. I would just like to comment that on the fact that if the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service were to remove structures, you cannot turn back the clock. Uh, those historical structure back there in pristine condition, if uh some of the folks have or have not seen those, um, if they were to be removed, that part of Ledger history and the United States history that we'll never get back.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Ms. Pearson? You need to unmute yourself, please.
I think we need to talk to Fish and Wildlife exactly to know what they have to offer and what they would or would not do with the property. Um, I don't think we have that information. So while Mr. McGinnis's letter does leave a lot of areas rather ambiguous, I don't see that as a bad thing. I see that as, that they are willing to work with the town. I also see that if they, if they read it carefully, I'm going to work with Avalonia as well. Yes, I agree with Ms. Vodri, that it could be a, become a part of Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge, um, no matter who owns it, and that would be a wonderful thing. But I just don't think that Avalonia has the, the funding or the volunteers or the resources to protect all those special structures that Mr. Engel is talking about. They near, they are going to need protection, and we are not sure that the Fish and Wildlife is suddenly going to come in and bulldoze anything or cut acres of forests or make patch cuts or anything. We need to hear how they would be managing that rookery and for bunnies and for many other species at risk. But without the information, how would we know? So.
Okay, Ms. Pearson, you've repeated yourself many, many times. I'm ready to move, um, unless anybody objects, I'm ready to call for a vote on. I'm ready to call for a vote on the question. I will read the question one more time just because that's the process and the procedure, so you will be hearing it for the third time. Shall the Town of Ledger transfer town-owned property located at 332 Colonel Ledger Highway, Ledger, approximately 96.52 acres Founder's Preserve to the Avalonia Land Conservancy to remain open to the public for passive recreation and to be protected in perpetuity under the Conservancy's, Conservancy's care with the following condition. The existing 1,800 square foot house and associated land would be subdivided off the land at Avalonia Land Conservancy's expense. Avalonia Land Conservancy would allow for the continuation of bow hunting on the Founder's Preserve property in accordance with Ordinance 100-018 and ordinance providing for archery hunting on certain town lands. And the Avalonia Conservancy will pay for all conveyances and fees regarding the transfer of the property. In the event Avalonia Land Conservancy determines they no longer wish to own or no longer can own the so-called Founder's Preserve property, Avalonia will first offer the property back to the Town of Ledger as the last owner of record. Such conveyance will be at no cost to the town other than customary recording and legal fees. The town shall have 120 days to accept or reject re-acquisition. The town shall notify Avalonia in writing of its intent to accept or reject. Should the town choose not to accept the property back, Avalonia will then have the right to convey the property to a third party of their choice. So at this time, I think the way we will do this is I am just going to ask for a hand raise, and then I'll go to the folks that aren't on the screen. So all those in favor, please raise their hand. Roxanne, are you, so I have one, two, three, four, five, six. Help me out here, Rox, because the pictures just changed.
Yeah, I'm counting. So I'm just, I'm going to do it by name. So I'm seeing, yeses.
I think that's the best way.
Okay, I'm seeing, for yeses, I'm going to, going to call out the names. So we've got Bill Song. We've got Jamie Vaudry.
Raise your hand.
Kevin Dombrowski. Maria Engel. Mary McGrath.
This is important.
Mary. Mike Cherry. Nate Woody. And Julie Dupont-Woody. Riley Vaudry. Scott Engel. Robert Shalaba. Steve Holyfield. Tom Malone. Okay, did I miss? Karen Orsky.
Jean Shalaba.
Alex Dozier. Okay, that's everyone I see. Did I miss?
Counselor Sebelia.
Okay. Who?
Barbara Duncan.
I, I just got you, Barbara.
Deborah Vassal.
Deborah Vassal?
Yes, I just got Deborah Vassal.
Jean Shalaba.
Do you have Jean and Robert Shalaba?
I have Rob, so I will put down Jean.
Mary Graham?
I've got Mary Graham. So I'll count up how many we have. We've got, Linda, were you a yes?
Um, yes.
David Vassals?
I've got Deborah Vassal.
David, John David Vassals?
Hi, Dave. Joining Jean Thomas. Did you vote?
No.
You're a yes or a no vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you have John and Jean Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. This is, this is interesting. Never have done this before, obviously.
Karen and Mr. and Mrs. Parkinson. So you're yes. Okay, so let me just, I'm just going to read the names again. I've got Bill Song, Jamie Vaudry, Kevin Dombrowski, Mary McGrath, Mary Graham, Nate Woody, Julie Dupont-Woody, Scott Engel, Rob and Jean Sebelia, Tom Malone, Karen Orsky, Alex Dozier, Barbara Duncan, Tony Sebelia, Deborah Vassal, and David Vassal, Linda, John and Jean Thomas, and Mr. and Mrs. Parkinson, and I think I, Mike. Kevin, were you a yes or a no? Kevin? Were you a yes or a no?
I would, I would be a yes. You called, you called me earlier.
I got you right there. Okay, so that, did I miss any?
Roxanne, it is Jean and Robert Shalaba, not Sebelia. Shalaba.
I'm sorry, yes, I got you. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I thought you called my name. This is Maria Engel.
But, yes, I do have to.
Okay. For a yes.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, seven, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25. I've got 25 yeses.
Okay, and now opposed, please raise your hand.
Okay, Eric Treaster. Robyn. Paul Mogul. Oh, Mike Washington. Andre Engel. Okay, I'm going to read the names that I have that say no, and if I miss anyone, let me know. I've got Eric Treaster, Mr. and Mrs. Robert, Paul Mogul, Mike Washington, and Andre Engel. Is there anyone else that wants to say no?
Here, Bruce Garska and Rose Marie Gartsko.
Okay, I'm going to read the list, the no list one more time.
Roxanne?
Yes.
It's, it's Ann Roberts Pearson and my husband Ray Pearson.
Okay, Ann and Ray. Okay, so I've got Eric Treaster, Ann Roberts Pearson, and Ray Pearson, Paul Mogul, Mike Washington, Andre Engel, and Bruce and Rose Marie Gartsko. Is there anyone else that I missed for no? Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, no. And. 26, yes.
The motion carries. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Before I ask for that motion, I'm sorry, just so that some of you know that are moving on to the next regular town council meeting, there will be about a three or four-minute gap between signing off here and signing on to the next meeting because there's a little bit of technology that happens. I would like to thank all of you for attending. This is a little awkward, but we, we managed to fold it off. Thank you. So is there a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved, Mike Cherry.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second, Counselor Engels.
Motion's been made and seconded. This meeting is adjourned without exception. Thank you for attending.
Good night. See you soon.
Yeah.
Thank you. It was a good discussion.